Good afternoon. I'd like to welcome everyone to this afternoon's study session from A City Council for Monday, May 6, 2013. I'd like to excuse Councilmember Glover, who's been under the weather, and Councilmember Summers will be late with some work conflicts. So, the first item on the agenda is to go over the agenda for tonight's regular council meeting. Page two, Items 2 through 3C. Items 3D through 5B. Items 5C through 5E. Items 5F through 5H. Items 5I and 5J. Items 5K through 5M. Items 5N through 5P. Items 5Q and 5R. Items 5S through 5U. Item 5V through 6C. Item 6D through 7A. Items 7B through 8A. Mr. Wesley.
Mayor, on item 7B, which is the annexation 1302, we noticed this afternoon a slight error in the caption where it says "east of North Ellsworth." It should say "east of North Hawes." The address range is correct, and it's correct on the other three items that are all related to the same property because this is an introduction. We believe it's okay. We'll have it read correctly into the record upstairs, and it'll be corrected for the actual ordinances when it comes back on. We just want to make that note here in the study session.
Thank you. Items 9A through 10A, and we will be having a short executive session on item 10A before we go upstairs. So, okay? Anything on there? Yeah, Councilmember Higgins.
I don't know if we will discuss it then, but I actually would like to request a continuance until the next meeting so we would have more time to discuss the other hotel offer that's come forward and be able to have-
That's what we're going to cover in the executive session. So, after the executive session, you feel the same, we can do that, but let's look at that in the executive session, okay? All right? Okay. All right. Next item on the agenda is to your presentation discussed provide direction on the following budget. First is Parks, Recreation, and Commercial Facilities. Mr. Erschberg.
Mayor, Council, good afternoon. Thank you for the opportunity to present our budget presentation to you and update you on some of our innovations over the past year and kind of where we're headed over the next year or so. Last year, we talked to you about our going-for-the-Gold program where we would work on our accreditation process to become a nationally accredited Parks and Recreation Department. Our visitation did occur in March, and I'm happy to report that on the visitors' report back to the commission, it showed that the city passed all, successfully met all 144 of the standards set forth by the commission. That's a pretty rare feat to get all 144, especially for an agency of this size, so that's a great feat that we're proud of. And then we have our final hearing in October, so we'll wait to hear on that and report back to you if we are successful in gaining our accreditation. Still waiting to hear back on our gold medal award application to be recognized as one of the best agencies in the country, and then continue the implementation of our strategic master plan. Partnerships have long been the success of this department, and those continue to be the case. Here's a list of some of the events. Just want to point out a couple of things, including the recent success of the Arena Grand Prix where several of the swimmers that were in attendance were tweeting out and reporting back that this was the best Grand Prix event in the country that they participated in. Also want to draw your attention to the Desert Challenge Games, which is happening next week at Red Mountain, Skyline, and Usery Red Mountain High School, Skyline Aquatic Center, and Usery Archery Range. This is a adaptive meet, a Paralympic qualifier, and this meet was actually recognized as one of six international meets that is automatically recognized as a Paralympic Grand Prix, which makes it an automatic international Paralympic qualifier for future Olympics. So, that's a pretty big feat. This is the only one in North America to be recognized with such an accomplishment. Fun and Fitness On Demand was a program we talked to you about expanding. One of the great things that I think is unique about Mesa is that we recognize not everybody can get to our facilities, so we do what we can do to get programs out to those that can't possibly reach our facilities. Fun and Fitness allows us to do that exactly with our recreation programs and provide interactive play, and we were successful in receiving a grant from the Gila River Indian Community to expand that program and add to our fleet. That bottom picture there is a van, a new fleet vehicle that we hope to roll out in the fall to expand that program and offer those services to even more youth throughout our community. Moving into the future, some of the things that we're going to start working on is a marketing campaign to make sure that people recognize that brand of Mesa Parks and Recreation with the tagline "Your Place to Play." So, kind of a new marketing campaign to kind of remind people where we're at, where we're headed, and you'll start to see this start to roll out on a lot of our marketing materials and press releases and the things we say and speak to the public, and we'll move forward with that. Council recently approved a contract for award of a new recreation registration system. We believe this is a huge investment in technology for our department. We'll make it easier for constituents, participants to register events and programs that we offer in a web-based software system. Right now, we have some functionality issues with our current system. This will allow people even to set up from their own usernames, their own accounts, and will already be tapped in through GIS with their residency based on and give those proper rates for them. So, we're looking forward to implementing this. Also puts us in line with some of the larger cities across the country, including New York, Los Angeles, Gulf, Chicago, San Francisco, Atlanta, and Phoenix as users of this system. Of course, the bond program, we're continuing to roll things out. Just a quick update where we're at. That picture at the bottom there is some of the signs that you'll start to see at project sites where bond projects will be occurring with contact information and an overview of the project. Eventually, once they're all awarded, we'll also include in the block recognition of the architect and the general contractor who will be working on those. Just a quick update, though, on some of the projects that we're at. Museum expansion, the architect is selected and design is underway. McKellips in Ellsworth, the architect has been selected. We're in the process of the contract scoping negotiated. Same at McDowell and Recker. Mesa High Pool, the architect evaluation is underway. Riverview Park, construction is ongoing with targeted completion of fall 2013. The West Mesa Sports Complex, which is Kleinman and Powell, the Mesa Education Center, architect evaluation is underway. Mesa Junior High, agreement was reached on the building salvage with MPS, and scoping is currently underway internally and will be released for architects of middle soon. Buckhorn Bass, the acquisition negotiations with the property owners are ongoing. Monterey Park, the northeast parcel is acquired. The middle parcel is nearing escrow, and we have since installed temporary parking and a tree border to help move some of the traffic off of the neighborhood streets and into that location, as well as start to shield for future sports field lights or whatever develop may occur there from the surrounding neighborhood. And as needed, we're going in there and doing additional site cleanup. Emerald Park is a project that will begin in mid-May. This is a major irrigation upgrade at that location, as well as a playground replacement. So, we're well underway, and of course, the trail projects. Mr. Clevenger and the transportation folks are moving along with those and working with the federal government where necessary on their projects and design. Facility enhancements, Willie will, of course, play a role and assist with the enhancement and construction work with the Oakland A's at HoHoCam Stadium and Fitch Park. We're about to undertake this summer a restroom remodel at the convention center, as well as heating, air conditioning, and lighting control upgrades and repairs. Window and door replacement at Dobson Ranch Golf Course. Of course, ongoing marketing of the newly opened Northview section at the Mesa Cemetery. In about a month from now, we will assume responsibility for East Mark's Gray Park, the first 10 acres of that location, and we'll start maintaining that. And then one thing that we'll start, we've established in the budget going forward is a $500,000 contingency should projects come online sooner. For example, if Mesa Junior High were to be demolished and the school district hands that property over to us sooner, then we're ready to move forward with our construction just so we have some funding set aside should we have to maintain that property on an interim basis until the full project comes online. Program enhancements. We'll continue with our cooperative bookings, which is something that we've been striving for for a long time with the Arts Center. The Piano Guys on June 12 at the Mesa AMP at 6:00 PM. This show is selling extremely well with no advertising. We're at over 15 or close to 1,500 tickets. Boston Pops just went on sale on a pre-sale over the weekend, and we sold 600 tickets in about three days. The events and concerts continue to increase at the AMP and other venues. This past weekend, we hosted U-Fest or U-Fiesta this year out at Quail Run Sports Complex to about 6,500 to 7,000 people there with no incident. And then next month, June 27, we'll be hosting the Vans Warp Tour. This is a concert that was primarily held in the West Valley for years and years, and because of our success with U-Fest and looking at that venue, the promoters decided to bring it here. We will work to continue to expand our junior golf program at Dobson Ranch Golf Course, as well as the expansion of non-traditional youth sports, something that we're proud of recognizing the grants offerings out there to expose the youth of our community to sports that aren't typically out there. Lacrosse, touch rugby, rather than tackle rugby and scrums, the touch version. We'll focus on improved coaches' training programs and continue to expand the youth sports and special events such as Hershey Track and Field, pump, pass, kick, pitch, hit, and run. An example of how those are growing, Hershey Track and Field. Last year, we offered that event with about 50 participants. Last year, this year, we had over 150. Our financial forecast continues to track the same from where we've been in the past. You'll recognize in personal services, where possible, the thing we can control, we work to identify those savings and underfill where possible or not fill vacancies until we absolutely need to. So, we're continuing to track as we have in the past on the financial picture there. That'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions? Councilmember Kavanaugh.
I have a question in Boston Pops. What is the venue?
HoHoCam Stadium.
Okay. Now, we'll hear from Falcon Field. Ms. Nystrom.
Before you go on, I just, it's hard to tell in this budget section, but I know that they've had a lot of pressure on building new parks and raising the level of maintenance on those parks, and I just want to, you know, reiterate that it's really important that they get a, that we recognize, you know, new parks that have come into the system and additional maintenance that has to happen to make sure their budget reflects maintenance in a robust way. So, it's just in this little chart, it's hard to-
Right. Well, if, there was a previous slide where he talked about the half million that were worse because something may happen sooner in this year, and so we've set aside, was half, am I on the right number? Half million that we've set aside. I think that was one of the slides to address that issue.
And I would presume because Riverview Park Center Construction, we're having to maintain, you know, so it's cost saving there.
That's assumed in the budget. We've made that assumption in his budget, but also in addition to that, I think, half million was for other projects that may come on sooner than we expected that we make sure he has the funds to do that maintenance also.
Yeah, that's just a really important component, I think, you know, if we're going to invest 70 million in parks over the next four years to make sure that we maintain what we're building in a really high quality, you know, because it really makes a difference.
And it's not only the projects, he mentioned it, it's not only the projects that we are creating with the bond election, but also with new development with the East Mark Project. We'll be taking all the responsibility for 10 acres?
First 10 acres.
First 10 acres of that park. So, he's going to have to then add on the staffing and equipment to be responsible for that for this next fiscal year also.
Very good. And Mayor, Councilmember Richens, we have also through the CIP process estimated O&M for those projects, so as they come on through the CIP process, the O&M should transfer down to the budget.
And, you know, in lean budget years, it's easy to go through and require percentage cuts, you know, on stuff, and so we just, I just want to recognize that we protect our investment in parks with good maintenance. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Graham.
Thank you, Mayor, Councilmembers. Appreciate the opportunity to visit with you about Falcon Field. I'm going to give you a brief overview of our proposed budget for next year. What I'd like to do is visit with you in the context of how Falcon Field is making efforts to move forward with the strategic initiatives that the city council has identified, and one of the things that we want to emphasize also, especially as the economy begins to recover, is that our primary focus continues to be our customers. We view Falcon Field and our customers as being the primary reason why we are there, and if we are taking care of our customers, then the airport is more likely to be successful. And I'll demonstrate to you several ways that we are endeavoring to do that. In terms of community engagement, we have actively expanded our exposure to the general public. We just recently held our fifth annual open house, and we were very pleased to see that there were over 17,000 people that attended the open house, which is the biggest attendance that we've ever had. So, that's obviously something, it's a great opportunity to get people out to the airport. We've also expanded our airport tours, ranging from preschool children on to business leadership groups. If some, we really encourage tours at the airport. If someone calls us up, we make time to make it happen. We also get involved in several other events like the Aviation Fascination, the Celebrate Mesa with our Balsa Wood airplanes that kids always like, and of course, the city council district events. We've also stepped up our efforts because we recognize, again, that the general aviation industry is changing. We really stepped up our efforts as the airport to try to enhance our relationship with our tenants because, again, they are our customers. And so, you can see here that we have hosted in the past and will continue to host several events that are just for our tenants, in addition to the regular tenant meetings that we hold with them, which are primarily held to get their input on various things that we are addressing there at the airport. We really like to hear what the tenants have to say before we implement any type of program. In terms of financial stability, as you can see here, we are, we continue to be an enterprise fund. All of our funds for Falcon Field are derived from the enterprise fund. We do not receive any funds at all from the general fund, and so, as you can see for the proposed budget for next year, we're actually, well, for this year, we're anticipating some budget savings, and then for next year, we're actually looking to budget a little bit less. So, we are very attentive to the costs and the importance of maintaining the costs down so that we can hold down the costs for our customers as well. We are financially self-sustaining and continue to be financially self-sustaining, and that is our goal so that we don't have to try to rely on the general fund for any type of the funding for the general operations. And here are some of the indicators as to the health of the airport. We still have over 700 aircraft based at Falcon Field. Over 100 businesses are located right on the airport with over 1,000 people working on the airport. The FAA and the state contribute, continue to contribute funds to the airport's infrastructure, and we're in very good shape as far as the airfield infrastructure. Even though we have experienced, as they have experienced across the country, a reduction in recreational flyers, we still do have a waiting list of about two years to get into the city-owned hangars, which is actually higher than what a lot of the other airports here in the valley have as far as the waiting list. And what we're really starting to see is some on-airport business expansions, and I will share some of that with you here in a minute. Now, one of the big mantras that we have there as a staff is how can we be more cost-effective? We're constantly looking for ways to save money, and these are just a few examples of some of the things that we are doing and will continue to do over the next year. The pavement maintenance, pavement repairs, we're being very innovative in that area to try to hold down our costs for our crack seal and seal coats, as well as looking into various improvements for the hangar and airfield lighting to be more energy efficient. In terms of economic development, this is, you see a list here of a few of the businesses on the airport that have recently expanded, and we feel that's very healthy for the airport. And what we're also seeing is some of those 40-year ground leases that have been there for a long time are now starting to expire, and those businesses are coming back to the city and wanting to renegotiate a new 40-year lease agreement, which we have been doing with them. One of the contingencies for them receiving another 40-year ground lease is that their development, their buildings, and their property be brought up to the standards of the current airport planned development. So, you will be seeing some older buildings that will be looking a lot more dressed up here in the next several months. Another business that we were able to successfully bring onto Falcon here recently is Sawyer Aviation. They are actually headquartered over in Scottsdale, but they wanted to try out Falcon Field to see how things would go for them here, and so, we're very excited to have them here. In terms of our capital improvements, you can see we are estimating a $5.5 million budget for next year. That will include the terminal building remodel, which we're going gangbusters on that. DWL is our architect for that, and if things continue on schedule as they have been, we anticipate that we will have the design completed, the project put out to bid, and construction to commence early in 2014. And then along with that, we are moving forward with the design on Falcon Drive improvements, as well as the water tower. We're currently in the process of receiving additional community input on what they would like to see done with the water tower, other than the fact that it's not going to go away. It's going to stay, but we want to find out, get some more input on what the community would like to see it look like. Now, in terms of quality of light, again, our goal is to always make things better for our customers, and so, some of the things that the staff, airport staff, has been working on is, we've been very actively involved with the fire inspection process that was instituted in the city-owned hangars last year. Not only am I participating myself in those actual inspections with the fire department, but our staff and myself, in some cases, are actually helping the tenants if they need to do some housekeeping, if they need to get building permits, if they need to do a little bit of cleaning up. We are actually helping them if they need help to do that. For the fourth year in a row, we are not proposing any new fee increases, so we're holding the line on that. We're actually proposing, as you probably saw last week, that we eliminate some fees that we think at this juncture are not necessary. And we also continue to endeavor to maintain our airfield to the standards that are required of the commercial service airports like Phoenix Mesa Gateway and Sky Harbor. Even though we aren't required by the FAA to do that, that is something that we feel we should be keeping that standard. And then, of course, we have the fly-friendly program, and we continue to move forward with that, to work with the tower, to work with our tenants, and to work with members of the community to try to keep everybody so that they're getting along and the impact of the aircraft is not too drastic upon the residents. This is just a list of some of the capital improvements, again, that we'll be working on next year. Some of those things, Mayor, you probably know exactly what all of those things are for the airfield, the pappies and the reels, but those are all things that we are going to be working on next year in cooperation with the FAA and the state to make enhancements to the airport.
And because they're related airplanes, you can use all the acronyms you want, and there will be no 25 cents.
Oh, go on.
Thank you.
I don't think you have four votes.
Doesn't matter.
I thought you'd be totally excited if you knew what those stood for, right?
It's my fine. I can decide how to do it.
Now, in terms of regional leadership, Falcon Field is clearly a leader here in the state of Arizona. We're very active in a number of the state organizations, as well as the regional and national organizations, but let's focus for a minute on Arizona. ADOT recently published an economic impact study of what is going on with Arizona's airports, and that study reflected that Arizona actually ranks fifth in the U.S. in terms of the number of active general aviation aircrafts. So, there's a lot of GA aircraft here in the state. Big economic impact, 6,900 jobs, which, as I mentioned earlier, 1,000 of those are at Falcon Field, and that doesn't include Boeing. But, in the state of Arizona, as well as nationally, general aviation operations have been declining. The recession hit general aviation dramatically, and it's taking a longer time for it to pull out of it. The forecast is, is that there will be increased GA traffic, but that growth is going to be pretty slow, as you can see in their projection of a 1.3% annual increase. So, where does Falcon Field fit into all of this, particularly as it relates to the region and Arizona? Well, if you draw a real estate background, it's all about location. It's location, 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 and I am a firm believer that Falcon Field's location is just prime for us to continue to grow and to develop. We will continue to be a major reliever diversion airport for the GA traffic for Sky Harbor and Phoenix Mesa Gateway. We are located in a major metropolitan area that will continue to grow. You know, the Phoenix area is going to continue to grow with population and businesses. We've got that great, good weather that people love to fly in, and as far as an airport is concerned, we know because we compare with what we're doing with other airports, especially here in the valley, we know that we have very attractive development opportunities for folks and very, very competitive fees. So, we are a really prime location for future growth and development, and if we're smart and we're strategic, Falcon Field's going to survive amidst the slow increase. But, again, what everything comes back down to is we are a firm believer that in order for us to survive, we have to continue to focus on our customer, who those customers are, what their needs are, and how we can best meet their needs and go the extra mile. And that is something that we are completely committed to. We ask our users and our tenants consistently, how can we do a better job of serving you? And most of them are very honest, and we appreciate that. And so, that's what is going to keep Falcon Field alive and well over the next 20 years. And so, with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions? I want to commend you for the, especially the fry, the fry-friendly, fly-friendly. I know Councilmember Higgins and I and staff and Natalie worked really diligently on that three, four years ago. We had huge issues. I'm not saying that airplanes still do make noise, but if you look at the complaints from around the neighborhood, they have decreased considerably, and I think it's because of the efforts that not only those in the airport have done, but also the partners on the airport, CAE in particular, and the tower, and those who have really done a lot to take into account that part of the customers are the people who live around airports.
That's right.
And, you know, I know that it's noticeably different in my house, and I get a lot of flyovers. flyovers. You can tell that people are taking it seriously, that the training is being done in a way that respects the neighborhood, and that the tower is putting people into patterns that, that respects the neighborhood also. So thank you for that.
Thank you. Well, thank you. I appreciate that feedback.
Yeah, the notices, the notice, the difference is noticeable, not the notice is differentable. The difference is noticeable, so thank you.
Thank you so much.
Okay. Any other questions? Great. Thank you. Acknowledged receipts of minutes of various boards and committees. Have motion from the Vice Mayor, a second from Councilmember Higgins. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. He reports the means of conferences attended. Any reports?
I had the opportunity to participate with Mayor Stanton and Mayor Lord in the, what exactly they call it? Oh, I know what it was. The Channel 12 did it last Friday. A day long on education, Education Nation. And it was very well done. It was over in Phoenix, and appreciated getting people from around the state to talk about education and jobs and the challenges we have here in Arizona. And so it was, it was honored to represent the city of Mesa in that discussion. Councilmember Higgins.
You do have something, Mayor. I'm on Friday, had the opportunity to represent the city of Mesa on a panel at the Arizona Water Conference, and we were discussing alternative delivery methods for water and wastewater treatment projects. So I get to represent the city.
What, as opposed to what, buckets and hoses and things like that?
Buckets, hoses, brushes, shovels. Yeah. So it was very fun.
Councilmember Kavanaugh.
Well, Mayor, Saturday morning, I had the opportunity to participate in an extraordinary reopening of a restaurant, TC Eggington's. And it, I gave my all for the city at 6:30 in the morning during ribbon cutting. It's the earliest ribbon cutting I've ever done, but it's.
The earliest?
It is the earliest.
That should be. There's Dunkin' Donuts at, at 4:00 in the morning, 3:30 in the morning.
That, I'll leave the donuts to you, I'll take the eggs.
And there were hundreds of people there. It was, it was unbelievable.
Three donuts? Were they all tops?
It was, it was solar in the morning. I can't.
That was late, right?
That's right.
And we had one more early thing. Last, a week ago Saturday, was the Sister City Golf Tournament, which had a very nice turnout, and Councilmember Kavanaugh was also there at 6:00 AM, as was I. But that was a good turnout, they had a lot, big fundraiser, sold out. So I didn't win this year, but it was okay. Gave someone else a chance to win.
Yeah, so nice.
The other thing is that we had a group of Mesa kids and some Masons who, who had a program last week called Mesa On Stage over at the Mesa Arts Center. Congratulations to them. Very well done, had the opportunity to go to that. Included members of Mesa Youth Committee, Mayor's Youth Committee and others in the community about service and the history of Mesa, and members of our community, I think led by Kate Alvarius, did a great job on that. So thank you for that.
All right. Mr. Brady.
Thank you, Mayor. This coming Friday, May 10th, I'll announce it again on Thursday, but Councilmember Kavanaugh will be having a coffee with a council member at this time at the City of Mesa's Transportation Management Center. That's at 300 E 6th Street. So that should be kind of an interesting place to sit and watch coffee as you watch cars go through intersections. And then also this Friday in the evening, there'll be a, from 6:00 to 10:00 PM, Friday Night Out in downtown Mesa. So invite everybody down.
We have a motion to enter into executive session from Councilmember Kavanaugh, a second from Councilmember Richens. Okay? Motion, a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We will move him down into executive session. Thank you very much.